Good morning. I would like to call the Hillsborough County Metropolitan Planning Organization Meeting to Order. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance at invocation? And I don't see a flag, so we'll just... Do we have one?
We do.
Okay, there we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our gracious and heavenly Father, we are so thankful that you touched us with your loving hands to awaken us to come together this morning to work to make this county a better place for all of us to live, work, and play. We ask that you rid of our minds and humble our hearts as we make those decisions. Father, we ask that you be with each and every one of us and people throughout this county, the state, this country, this world as we continue to deal with this pandemic. Father, we ask that those that are sick, that you touch them with your healing hands, and those that have lost loved ones, you put your loving arms around them to comfort them. We ask that you protect our first responders, whether they're in hospitals and taking care of those sick or in uniform, maybe military uniform, or police uniform, any other uniform that puts their lives on the line for each and every day. We ask you to protect them. When our work is done today, we ask to take us back to our homes to find everything safe and sound. These are our blessings. We ask your righteous and holy name. Amen. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Les Miller, Jr.
Here.
This is Paul Anderson. Charles Clune. Councilman Joseph Citro.
Present.
Councilman John Dingfelter. Commissioner Ken Haggin.
Here.
Mr. Adam Harden. Melanie Williams. Commissioner Pat Kemp. Mr. Joe Lepano.
Here.
Mayor Rick Lot. Nate Kilton. Councilman Guido Menescalco. Mr. Michael Moreno.
Here.
Commissioner Kimberly Overman.
Here.
Mayor Andrew Ross.
Here.
Commissioner Mariella Smith. Cindy Stewart. Steve Kona. Mr. Joseph Wagner.
Here.
Thank you.
Do we have a quorum?
Commissioner, this is Cameron Clark. I can't... It's a bare form. Is it... Are we doing the same thing?
What?
I think I counted nine members.
So does...
Which would be a quorum.
Okay.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I just want to say I'm present. This is Pat Kemp.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, we see that Melanie Williams with heart is also present.
Okay. All right. Very good. Ms. Williams is present. Okay, you should have received the minutes from the June 3, 2020 meeting. Are there corrections or additions of the minutes? If not, may I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Overman. Is there a second?
Thank you.
The second by Councilman Dave Felder. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll to approve the minutes.
Commissioner Les Miller, Jr.
There. Yes.
Okay. Mr. Paul Anderson.
Charles Clune for Paul Anderson, yes.
Charles Clune, thank you very much. Councilman Joseph Citro.
Yes.
Councilman John Dingfelter.
Yes.
Commissioner Ken Haggin.
Yes.
Melanie Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Kemp.
Yes.
Joe Lepano.
Yes.
Mayor Rick Lot. Or Nate Kilton. Councilman Guido Menescalco. Mr. Michael Moreno.
Yes.
Commissioner Kimberly Overman.
Yes.
Mayor Andrew Ross.
Yes.
Commissioner Mariella Smith.
Yes.
Cindy Stewart. Or Steve Kona. Mr. Joseph Wagner.
Yes.
Thank you.
By your vote, minutes have been approved. We now move into public comment. Each speaker has thirty... I'm sorry, three minutes to speak. We've set aside thirty minutes of public comment. Do we have anyone signed in for public comment? Do we have anyone signed in for public comment?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We have Chris Vella.
Pardon me?
Chris Vella.
Okay, Mr. Vella, good morning. You have three minutes.
Good morning. I wish I had thirty. Okay, first of all...
No way, buddy, no way.
I just wanted... I know. First of all, I wanted to say thank you for those on the board that have listened to me and made some really good pointed questions to DOT the last meeting. That meant a lot to me. For the those who didn't, I hope you all get it one day. I want to walk really quickly through the history of our interstate system. In 1955, way before I was born, this project, I-4 and I-275, started at a ninety percent subsidy. So the federal government gave Florida ninety percent match. No funds owed back, a ninety percent match to build a highway. In 1957, we saw FDOT's plan, and it included the Fourteenth and Fifteenth Street exits. That's right. Sixty-three years ago, we had the exit, those exits on the downtown interchange. And that's when the redlining occurred. And the redlining, what I mean by that is when we started to divide the communities based on color, skin color, and wealth. And so there is a strong connection between the highway plan and how we fragmented our communities administratively. In 1988, FDOT does their first editorial for the Tampa Interstate Study, which is a predecessor to the Tampa Bay Next. They say, FDOT says in this article, that four thousand properties would be displaced. Now, we don't really know from eighty-nine to this point how many properties were displaced. But I do know it's probably at least over a thousand. Going over to 1989, we saw a bunch of land being turned over to roads in South County. There was an MPO commissioner that was tied to this effort. There was also a planning commissioner tied to this effort. The reason why I'm bringing this up is because those roads that were lobbied by public servants and the people outside of that group got their road to South County adopted in the 2010 MPO plan, right? There's no transit. And if we fast forward into present day, right now, the I-4 connector, if you guys, and I can give you all this information, if you look at the map right now, Google Earth, you will see disconnected ramps going into Ybor, going east towards the I-4. Those ramps haven't been finished. So by you all approving TB Next, you're going to see the downtown interchange explode. And there's about three connections of ramps that are disconnected. They stopped for some odd reason in 2009. But those are going to be built, and more homes are going to be destroyed in East Tampa as well as in Ybor City. And my last point here is that we had a Transportation for America study that was just released two days ago. And right now, we are designing at a hundred and eight percent capacity of population growth, right? But our real population growth for Tampa is only fifty-one percent. Our congestion, because we're doing so much, induced demand at nearly a hundred and fifty percent. The reason why these numbers are so crazy is because we're just designing the wrong roads, for one. We're not designing to reconnect neighborhoods and local streets. We're investing too much on highways, so we have a lot of congestion. And we're making so many roads beyond our population number. So this is hard evidence in Transportation for America. I will send it to all of you guys, and please take a look at it. And also, we are number two. We lead number two with the most roads in the whole entire state. So we're fifty-three hundred miles of roads all the way since the beginning of time, and that's going from Tampa to the North Pole. So that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking? Yes?
Excuse me. This is the reporter. I was just gonna ask if everybody can mute. I'm getting a lot of feedback that who's not talking.
Okay, when you're not speaking, please mute your microphones, please. Do we have anyone else speaking in the public comment?
There are no further comments.
Okay. Thank you very much. That closes the public comment section of the meeting. We now move to committee reports and advance comments. Mr. Bill Roberts, CAC Chair. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the MPO Board. I'm Bill Roberts, Chairman of your CAC Committee. I have a couple of items to report. The CAC held a workshop on July the fifteenth to delve into the fiscal impact analysis by CAC representative from Plant City. We went over his analysis and heard from several invited guests who offered their comments, and they're thinking about development decisions for Plant City in the East County area. Secondly, the CAC held an ad hoc subcommittee meeting on June the twenty-third. The purpose of this subcommittee meeting was to craft a proposed resolution taking a stand against discrimination and promoting racial equity in transportation. We expect that your Citizens Advisory Committee will consider this resolution at our August meeting. Thirdly, I want to thank the MPO Board for your timely consideration of the recommendations from the Citizens Advisory Committee at your MPO tip hearing on June the thirtieth. I will tell you that your CAC continues to advance and explore opportunities for transportation and recommendations being before you. You have twenty-three devoted citizens who volunteer their time to come to these meetings sometime lengthy, and we appreciate your consideration of our recommendations. That concludes my report. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Any question, Mr. Roberts? Any questions? Thank you very much. Ms. Wanda West.
Good morning, MPO Board and Wanda West, MPO staff. The Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee took a summer recess from its monthly meeting. Instead, the committee held a virtual workshop to discuss items for future consideration. Requests were made for presentations from the City of Tampa and Hillsborough County staff focusing on planned and recently completed pedestrian and bicycle projects. Committee members also supported additional speed studies, including areas around USF and the need for more consistent maintenance of existing bicycle and pedestrian facilities throughout the county. The Intelligent Systems, Intelligent Transportation Systems Committee held its quarterly meeting and heard status reports on performance evaluation of the e-scooter deployment in the City of Tampa, Smart Cities Mobility Plan, the scope review, Sea Pilot, Lessons Learned in the Tampa Bay Next Update, West Coast Trip, which is a comprehensive transportation management plan to address traffic management, regional demand, innovation, and smart work zones, and public engagement. The Chairs Coordinating Committee for Hillsborough, Pinellas, Pasco, Polk, Hernando, Citrus, and Sarasota Manatee MPOs met for an annual review of regional priorities. The CCC approved for consensus updated priority list for transportation, regional incentive program, and for regional multi-use trails, including Sun Trail corridors. The CCC also was briefed on a regional long-range transportation plan summary document that is currently being drafted. Following the CCC's business meeting, a joint meeting was held with the Central Florida MPO Alliance, including a panel discussion with three Florida Department of Transportation District Secretaries and the Assistant Secretary of Florida Department of Transportation. The Tampa Bay Regional Area Transportation Authority provided a briefing on the new regional transit development plan. The Tampa Bay Transportation Management Area Leadership Group members discussed the role of TBARDA in transit agencies and delivering transit in the region. This topic will be explored more at the September quarterly meeting of the TMA. Staff received emails thanking them for coordinating the CCC board meeting and/or holding a virtual meeting for Eric Holt, the West Coast Community Association Governing Affairs Committee Chair. Mr. Holt inquired about trails in the Citrus Park area, and staff provided a response. There were no Facebook comments or voicemail messages received prior to the meeting. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. West. Any questions, Ms. West? Any questions, Ms. West? Thank you very much. We now move into action items, and all these action items will require a roll call vote. So our first one is committee appointments. Michelle Wilkenning.
Good morning. Cheryl Wilkenning, MPO staff. The Transportation Disadvantaged Coordinating Board nominated Councilmember Gil Schistler for Heart. The Intelligent Transportation Systems Committee nominated Daniel Buden's FDOT advisor and Judith Villages alternate for THIA. The Citizens Advisory Committee nominated Don Skelton, Jr. for the Tampa Port Authority. Recommended action is the MPO confirm these appointments.
Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Overman. Second by, I think that's on Ms. Melanie Williams, second. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Commissioner Les Miller.
Yes.
Charles Clune.
Yes.
Joseph Citro.
Yeah.
Don Dingfelter.
Yes.
Ken Haggin.
Yes.
Melanie Williams.
Yes.
Pat Kemp.
Yes.
Joe Lepano.
Yeah.
Mayor Rick Lot or Nate Kilton. Councilman Guido Menescalco.
Yes.
Michael Moreno.
Yes.
Kimberly Overman.
Yes.
Andrew Ross. Mayor Andrew Ross.
Yes.
Mariella Smith.
Yes.
Cindy Stewart or Steve Kona. Joseph Wagner or Bob Frye.
Yes. Joseph Wagner.
Okay. Thank you.
By your vote, the motion is adopted. We now move into Vision Zero Speed Management Action Plan. Paula Flores.
Good morning, Board members. This is Gina Torres on your staff, and I just wanted to introduce this item, if I could, for just a second. I wanted to remind the board that almost three years ago, you took the leadership to bring the national movement of Vision Zero to our community, and what better place to make that commitment, that we can accept even a life loss when we average about two hundred deaths a year and sixteen hundred people are seriously injured? So in a moment, you're going to hear about a study that came out of the futures will not be like the past action track. But I just wanted to just bring some attention to another of the action tracks, the one message, many voices. Just to kind of, I haven't presented before you in a little bit, and one of the goals of that action track is to engage with the victims of traffic violence. And two days ago, on Sunday, I spent almost more than half an hour with, on the phone with Trinity Rath. Trinity's college student in Orlando, she was raised in Tenota Sasa though, and she clearly remembers the last day of her junior year of high school when she received a call that her grandmother was killed in traffic. She called Lila Reed, her mom, until the age of twelve, and Lila was her life. It's taken her about two years for Trinity to find the strength, according to her words that she got from her grandmother, to share her story. She actually just Googled and reached out and got San Francisco's Vision Zero Network, and that kind of made its way to me so that I could call her. And she really wants to make a difference so that others don't have to go through this raw heartache, you know, that she and her family are feeling. So she has some ideas that she wants to engage her peers, and she's looking to me to help her share her story. I just wanted, Lila's crash remains really clear in my mind and memory because she died the same day that Jessica and Lily had died on Bay Shore. Lila was on Forty Street, and hours before her own death, she had called her daughters to tell her about the crash on Bay Shore and to say, honey, be careful. So just in those two crashes alone, we have witnesses, we have the driver, the drivers. We have the family members and loved ones and friends that are, that's just one day. Those are just two crashes that have really changed the life of so many people, and these stories are important to share. So I just wanted to kind of bring it back to why we're doing this. I'm really proud of the study you're about to see, which is can potentially directly impact and change so that other people don't have to contact me and tell me about their loved ones' loss. So I just wanted to introduce Paula, who is going to tell you about a study that we are wrapping up, and I hope that we'll get your support for this. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioner Miller and Board members. This is going to be just a fifteen-minute summary of a lot of work that has been accomplished over the last year. The full report covers a lot of the background and in-depth look at the elements that I will cover for you today. Next slide. So, you know, this, like Gina said, this is a very important step to take furtherance of both not just the Hillsborough MPO's Vision Zero policy, but also the complete streets policy. The transportation reforms that have been going out throughout the nation on how to address dangerous streets have been the guide throughout this process for us. So you may be asking, why should we care about speed management and safety? And the answer is simple, because it affects quality of life. It affects how you get around. It affects public health and safety and economic development in our community. So this action plan, however, is not a policy statement, nor a directive to any local agency, but rather a next step towards reducing fatal and serious injury crashes through identification of best practices that have been proven, not just nationally, but also locally. Next slide. And as Gina just mentioned, three years ago, the MPO took on the challenge of developing a Vision Zero action plan. You know, but we couldn't deny that our alarming high injury and fatality rates were leading the country. And the good work being done locally hadn't been effective enough at reducing the number of lives lost. So it was time to really elevate this issue. Next slide. And it is under the Vision Zero Action Plan, like Gina just mentioned, that future is not like the past, the goal number one, that recognizes the critical need our community has in addressing speeds on our streets. Next slide. And this is really because year after year, we remain in the nation's top ten metro areas with highest pedestrian fatalities. And in Florida, is the most dangerous state in the nation for pedestrians and bicyclists. Next slide. And with an average of two hundred plus fatalities a year in Hillsborough County alone, a person is dying on Hillsborough streets every other day. And we have become complacent when we see the news each time. Next slide, please. So the action plan has just one simple goal, and that is to improve public health and safety by reducing road fatalities and serious injuries. But our desired outcomes are many, such as improving safety experience for all road users, increasing awareness, institutionalizing good practices, identifying supportive policies and programs, and of course, we couldn't be successful without obtaining the cooperation and the support of all the stakeholders. Next slide. So the scope for this Hillsborough County plan included five tasks that covered, you know, stakeholder involvement, review of speed management practices, prioritization of the high injury quarters, and then the development of the action plan. I will go over them very, very quickly for you. Next slide. So task one was the stakeholder engagement, which included the cities, the county, the school district, law enforcement, transit agency, and even the health department. The stakeholder team met four times over the year and shared different agency efforts that are ongoing. It shared priority metrics for us to consider through this process and countermeasures to be added to our toolkit, which I'll talk about a little later. And of course, the stakeholder group had the opportunity as well to provide input on the action plan. Next slide. So the test two on speed management practices, we did solicit examples, not only from our local partners, but we also reviewed other statewide efforts. And, but the study itself is really reliant heavily on national best practices, as this is an emerging practice in safety throughout the nation. Next slide. But it is clear by various national agencies, such as the National Safety Council, that with the right policies, technologies, and strategy, we could and can prevent all roadway deaths. Next slide. Speedy-related crashes have significant impacts on society, but unfortunately, it has been normalized. This is a national problem, but we do have effective solutions that must be applied locally. We do have guidance, we do have tools, and we do have the collaborative approach needed to truly start making a difference in our community. Next slide. If there is one slide I want you to remember is this one. The fatality and serious injury risk increases significantly as speeds increases. For example, at twenty miles per hour, if a pedestrian or a bicyclist is hit by a vehicle, it will have an eighty percent chance of survival. While at forty miles per hour and above, a pedestrian bicyclist hit will have a twenty percent survival rate. Any street with speeds above forty miles an hour will likely result in crashes with deadly consequences. This is because when driving at higher speeds, your periphery vision is notably reduced, which then requires increased reaction time to stop before a collision occurs. And at these higher speeds, the force of impact is too much for the human body to withstand. Next slide. So there's transformative approaches across the country to manage speed. And this is because the limits today unfortunately have become the minimum travel speed instead of the maximum speed that it truly is. Next slide. Cities across the nation have recognized the significance of speed on eliminating fatalities and are now reducing speeds across their cities. Some of the initial reports from the early adopters are showing significant positive effects on reducing crashes, fatal and injury crashes. Next slide. They don't have to go very far because even locally, we have seen the successful results. Oh, I'm gonna skip. Hold on a second. Okay, just a quick reminder that this plan's attributes are based on the USDOT publication on speed management. It is data-driven. We are looking at applying basic principles at all levels. We are looking at establishing appropriate safe speeds. We are looking to institutionalize good practices, work cooperation from traffic safety stakeholders. Next slide, please. Here it is. So even locally, we have seen the successful results from application of national best practices, including reduction of the speed limit on Fletcher Avenue. The changes on Fletcher have had notable positive effects on reducing fatal crashes by approximately sixty percent, reduction in serious injuries by forty-six percent. We have had great compliance with mid-block crosswalks and with little impact really on the travel speeds in the quarter. So this is what this plan is really all about, doing more to provide safer streets. This is urgent because the benefits that have been proven is now time to just do it. It is time we institutionalize these practices for use across our community. Next slide. But before I get to this next segment, I also wanted to bring everybody up to date. We just got some fantastic news. You know, in 2017, when the National Transportation Safety Board recommended an overhaul on how speed is managed on US streets, including how to set speed limits, the National Association of City Transportation Officials, which is The National Association of City Transportation Officials, which is NACTO, just this past week, I think was on Thursday. Released a new publication called City Limits, which is how to set speeds on urban streets. This document provides guidance, not just how to set speed limits throughout a region. It talks about how designing slow zones like neighborhoods and around schools or, or on quarters. So this is a must new. It's a new publication and it is a must read by all professionals and elected officials. All right. So on to task three. Now, the quarter prioritization process is the guide on the evaluation of various community focus factors along a quarter. Next slide, please. We started with a data-driven approach. We looked at all the crashes. And here are some of the fatal crash trends we found for the top 20 high injury quarters in Hillsborough County. Eighty-three percent occurred during non-peak hours. When traffic is less, congestion is less and abundant capacity on our streets is available. Seventy-one percent aggravated driving speed-related contributing factors. Almost 60% happened actually at mid-block locations, not at intersections. And 92% of all the fatal crashes that have occurred on the, the top 20. Occurred on streets with posted speeds in excess of 40 miles an hour. Next slide. So we started. The table, oops. Okay, right there, right there. Sorry. So we started by evaluating speed limits to see if they were appropriate and rational for the context of the community. What this table shows is that when posted speeds are compared to national best practices identified by ITE and CNU. Seventy percent of the quarters in the top 20 have posted speeds in excess of five to 10 miles per hour. And 15% of these quarters have posted speeds of 15 to 20 miles per hour above national practice. So please note that most drivers travel at five to 10 miles per hour above the posted speed. So we do have a problem and a very serious one, no less. So if we don't manage speed, we will not achieve Vision Zero goals. Next slide. But changing speed limits on our streets is not going to happen overnight. We should not just go out there and change the speed limit signs everywhere. It should be done, however, in combination with other traffic calming countermeasures. Even just adopting, for example, though, a context classification for each road with a proper target speed per national best practice. Practices is critical variable. It is a critical variable in designing streets. Because speed limits affect many design variables, such as how long turn lanes are and need to be sight distance, how wide travel lanes are, etc. So bottom line, changing speed limits isn't the only task, but it is a critical element for better street systems of our future. Next slide. One of the other tasks that we had to perform was to determine how to prioritize the high injury quarters. So besides just looking at the severity crash rate, seven factors were evaluated and used, such as the ones posted on the slide, posted speed context class that I just mentioned. Regional equity and low income and so forth, crash history, proximity to schools, ped bike injuries, transit routes and access. And of course geometric features. We developed a risk performance level. That simply states the higher the exposure, the more likely the severity crashes can occur. The higher the points that were applied to the quarters, hence the higher the priority a quarter should be. Next slide, please. So the table in front of you summarizes a priority matrix for each or for the top 20 quarters. We gave these factors a weighted average and then developed the final score shown in the last column called our priority scoring. But what this exercise really indicated to us is that if we all only look at the severity crash rates. We may not be investing in the quarters with the greatest need. Next slide. Now, some of the quarters on the top 20 were already under evaluation by their jurisdictional agency. We were asked to identify the next 30. What's next and prioritize them. Next slide. The next 30 high entry quarters, the map shows actually the existing 20 in blue and the next 30 in green. I know it's hard to read, but we have a lot of work to do ahead of us. Next slide. And these quarters were also evaluated and prioritized using the same methodology I described just a second ago. And here is a prioritization of the next 30 quarters and these will be very helpful for all the agencies involved. Next slide. So now we get to the exciting part. We're going to go over some of the strategies and countermeasures and actions to be taken moving forward. Next slide. Per Vision Zero principles, however, safety is very complex. In order to have safe travel for all users, we must have safe streets, safe speeds, safe vehicles and safe people. But considering that a third of the US population does not drive, especially the most vulnerable, safe people should be our highest priority. So focusing on people first to also create better outcomes in our streets, including improved walkability, livability, connectivity to services, to jobs, to schools and to parks. Next slide. A safe systems approach to the application of safety countermeasures is a must to prevent fatal crashes from happening. And so we, this pretty much says we have to be proactive, not reactive. And looking simply at just the hotspots isn't sufficient. So we must take a very holistic view of all the roads, the features, the contacts, the users and the connectivity needs of the system. Next slide. So what we have done through this process is create an aggressive driving crash countermeasure toolkit. That starts with safe people first, really. This toolkit provides all the national and international good practices at your fingertips right in this document. But it's, it is not all exhaustive and we also have. Customized it in order to meet some of the needs and the conditions that we saw in the Hillsborough County quarters. So the toolkit also indicates, for example, on this table, what area, for example, is, is it applicable in an urban area, suburban area or rural? Or location type is that appropriate in intersection, in a slow street, a neighborhood street or an arterial. So the toolkits, the Safe People Toolkit actually includes raised pedestrian crossings, for example, wider sidewalks. Refuge islands, pedestrian crossings and the whole list. It just keeps on going. Next slide. The next part of the toolkit is about safe streets. You know, and it includes traffic calming techniques, narrow travel lanes, roundabouts, raised intersections. Eliminating acceleration lanes, which we see a lot here in Hillsborough. Street lighting, two-way streets and of course always reevaluating the context class of a quarter and also its target speed. Next slide. The next toolkit piece is about safe streets. We also includes countermeasures for freeway interchanges that we found on several quarters like Dale Mayberry and others. And it includes redesigning some of these high-speed off-ramps, providing safe continuous bike lanes and reevaluating its speed. Safe traffic operations in the lower half of the table. Includes increase in the number of traffic signals to provide more connectivity, LPLs, RRFs, lower speeds. Target speed for signal coordination and even automated enforcement. Next slide, please. So for this section, I'm just going to go refer you really to the full report, which is in depth. And so I'm going to simply go over and highlight some of the actions for each of the sections on how to set speeds. Engineering operations, education, policy and legislative evaluation. There are many examples again in the full report that I, I hope all of you have had an opportunity to look at. Next slide. So let's start with speed setting. Under the speed setting, there are three actions that were identified for this category. For each of the actions, the plan also identifies if it's a short, if it's a mid or a long-term effort. Next slide, please. For engineering and operations. We actually had identified eight actions that covers a wide spectrum of elements, including the need to evaluate all 50 quarters that had been prioritized. Updating design manuals, you know, more design flexibility, local street design guidelines and professional training and funding actions. Next slide. For education. There are three action items that were identified, starting with education and training, not just for public, but also elected officials. Eventually drafting a speed management policy if necessary and a development of PSA messages on various topics about how to use. Not only for all road users, how to use the streets safely, but. But also a lot of other measures that I had incorporated in there. Next slide, please. For policy and legislative, this is something that as transportation professionals, we really don't go into or do a lot of work in this area. But we did identify five actions covering how to set speed limits. It's something that we have to really update and make sure that we're in conformance with national best practices that are out there today. How to set aggressive Vision Zero goals, you know, that are, that are quicker, that there's more urgency to them. So we can see bigger results or more results in saving lives, you know, updating land use policies, for example. Making sure that our, that we have mixed-use land uses, that we have grid street systems, that we provide multimodal access to all of them. Or how to make sure that we have safe access to all our neighborhood schools in our communities. So we have to think about all of these things that really affect our community as a whole. But then also look at initiating new traffic safety legislation. You know, what is it that we need? What tools do we, could we use in this toolkit for us to be more effective at saving more lives? So we have a lot of work to do ahead of us, but this is a great outline of things that we should start thinking about in our community. Next slide. And then the last slide is really just on evaluation of the plan. It simply calls for routine updates. Let's see where we are in saving lives. But establishing also qualitative and quantitative measures to evaluate all the programs that are ongoing in our community. So these are just a glimpse into all of the actions and strategies in the action plan. And I hope you have taken the time to read the, the report that we have or the community or our stakeholders have prepared for you. Next slide. So in short, our recommendation is to approve the speed management action plan. So while our partners can continue to address safety in Hillsborough County. And we can have a significant impact on saving lives. So I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Flores, for that presentation. Are there any questions? Are there any questions?
I have a question and comment.
A question, Commissioner Oberman, you recognize?
Um, thank you. And I, I really appreciate Ms. Flores' report. Part of the reason I am sitting in this seat, well, not this one, but this position that I'm in. Is as Ms. Torres actually suggested. That our lives have been changed forever and I've been dealing with the impact of 19 years of trauma as a consequence of a speed event in Hill, in Tampa. So the importance of this piece is so important. How do we, and I know we had put it on our agenda at one point in time. How do we interface with our state legislators? When, when they tend to bring legislation to kill, for example, our beacons on Fletcher Avenue. That help address this. There's a conflict here that we need to proactively address. And I was curious if we have on our agenda to meet with the legislatures regarding. NPO priorities and Vision Zero specifically, because this is a very important part of the work that we do locally.
Um, may I answer part of that, Commissioner? Thank you. Yesterday, I was on the quarterly state bike head coalition safety meeting. So these topics legislatively are talked about there. And there, we're trying to move some of these things forward, like the red light running cameras and speed enforced, automated speed enforcement. It's a hard, it's a hard one, but it's really effective and it's kind of those are the types of. Recommendations that are coming out of these groups. And then I think we've had a request from the legislative delegation to kind of give them some things that they can put on their platform. That, anybody else? My first thoughts.
Sure. And I could respond to the Commissioner's question about are we planning to meet with the legislators? And yes, our, our fall meeting, the Tampa Bay TMA Leadership Group is going to focus on legislative issues. And we have invited a couple of our legislative delegation members. So we're working to confirm that.
Let me, let me comment on that, having served up there for a while. First and foremost, you don't need to get part of the legislative delegation, you need to talk to all of the legislative delegation. I don't know if they're going to have a delegation meeting before session starts next year with this pandemic the way it is. That's when you need to talk to them at once, that they know they invite part of them to a meeting and part of this meeting, you need to talk to all of them. The most difficult part of that is when they get into session. Session moves very, very fast, 60 days. And some ways, somehow you must continue to reemphasize how important. The information that you gave them is during that particular session now. That's, that's a difficult part. Because you're not going to get, be able to talk to every, every legislator, every senator, representative, you got to talk to their staffs. And emphasize those staff members, how important it is to get that information to them. That's a difficult part of this whole process. We start talking about legislators. Talking to them during the delegated session locally before they go to session. And then once they get a session, get them that information, continue to harp on them. That's, that's the most difficult part of the whole process. Okay, Ms. Williams, you recognize?
Uh, thank you, Chairman Miller. Ms. Flores, as well as Ms. Torres, thank you for the presentation on Vision Zero. I had a couple of questions in regards to your, of course, focus on safe people first, considering. A third of the population are not driving. And then you talked about the Fletcher Avenue. I know Commissioner Oberman talked about it as well. And they do have those mid-block lights where people are crossing over. Personally myself, I view a number of people not stopping, are not aware that that light is blinking and needs to stop. And as you, as you look at the plan, it talks about education and awareness. What are the tactics that you have in mind and to educate people on? That cross block or some, some, some others in that area because it's heavily traveled. And, and I've, I've, I've seen people on the, on the line on the side of the road twice as a result of an injury in, in that location. And so that would be more my concern. I certainly agree with your plan. Something has to happen. I'm just not sure how we get the attention as a fire station. When you know a fire station is coming out of their, their location, you absolutely know to stop. And so I don't know that we have that sense of urgency and how do we get that education and awareness as part of an immediate tactical plan to save our people?
I'd like to answer that one. But Fletcher Avenue, by the way, is a county road. And the county, working with DRT and the surrounding neighborhoods and the community have done a lot of education. They were on the streets, speaking to people. And there was a behavioral study done as long, as well as the data of. Traffic was still moving, the crashes have dropped, but they hid behind different locations and have made observations. Motors were complying with the button being pushed over 90%. And pedestrians and whoever is pushing it, cyclists or pedestrians actually complied. You know, over 80% in these observations and they'll continue to make those. So I know that you see a few people doing things wrong and, and we're, humans make errors if their destination is right across. But at least on Fletcher, they do have an option for a look, short distance to make a, the proper crossing. So the numbers are showing that it's working, that those fatalities and serious injuries have dropped. So you are, there's always, you know, but anyway, so the education part of it was pretty intense. They had gone to groups, they stayed out and walked along the roadway to talk to people. They had things that you could hand out, they had stencils on the ground, they did a lot, quite a bit. So. You're still going to miss a lot of people that way, but at least we can, there's, it's, you pointed out a great challenge. Being able to reach more people with the messages, that we will not stop.
Well, thank you. I'm glad, I'm encouraged by the results based on what you're saying. So thank you. Thank you, Chairman Miller.
You're welcome. Commissioner Kip, you recognize?
Thank you. First of all, Ms. Flores, your work is always so good, and so a great education for all of us about this, and greatly appreciated. I have several, and I think one point that is forgotten sometimes when you did the list at the beginning of the Florida City, seven out of ten, I think, you know, that have the the high highest crash and and fatality rates in the nation. That's what sometimes I think people think it's in Florida, but this is for the nation, seven out of the top ten are in Florida. It's it's important for us to recognize that. I imagine, after seeing your presentations, there's all kinds of things that are, you know, we know that we're dangerous by design, and probably a lot of that is speed. So this is is important and transformative work for for us to do here. I just wanted to, in terms of the state, I think one of the issues, and I don't, I think I saw Secretary Gwynn, I'm not sure, but but Ms. Alden probably knows this, our strategic intermodal system, which is basically our interstates, don't they, are they by law, do they are designated seventy percent of our funding through the state of Florida each year? Is that accurate?
There is a target investment, and Secretary Gwynn is on the on the meeting.
Secretary Gwynn, you recognize.
So, yeah, we have obviously different pots of money. We we have money off the top that goes for things like preservation of our roads, things like that. Or the strategic intermodal system money right now is the goal is seventy-five percent of that money is for capacity projects, but we are revisiting that right now to look at whether in urbanized areas like like ours and South Florida and Orlando, we should look at perhaps being more flexible and allowing for some of that strategic intermodal system money to be used for things other than highway capacity. So that is something that's being looked at very closely right now.
Thanks. I think when we talk about the legislature, it's one of the things that we have to ask and and draw awareness for, because as long as all this funding is directed at that, and usually at capacity, we're talking about lane expansion, making those roads bigger, rather than all the arterial roads that we have that are so dangerous and so in need of our resources. So I think that this priority on the system, as you say even, and I've heard in other areas, is not well-placed, especially in urban areas where the needs are so great, as we saw from the map that Ms. Flores put out there, and that was just the the first twenty projects. And we had some thirty more, I guess, that I hope to be looked at soon. And the third point I just wanted to make about this is the design manual. As I understand it, you know, there we have our our national design manuals, but we also have a local Hillsborough County design manual that's being worked on at this time. Is that true, Ms. Alden? And and I think it's really important, because also there's a lot of design exceptions in there that have made and allowed us to continue having by the by by this manual, dictated by this manual, a continue down the path of poor design, poor roads, poor standards, by the design exceptions, but also by some of the dictates in that manual have continually lead us, specifically in Hillsborough County, under our control to the the kinds of poor designs that cause fatalities and accidents. And so as we're looking at this now, and I've been trying to get a handle on that, it's quite complicated. I looked through the design manual, it's, I think, something, if I remember right, something like six hundred pages, and you know how that all intersects. But I think as far as I know that you, Ms. Flores, brought up land use, and that's part of the it's our land use, people that deal with that in Hillsborough County, the design manual as along with the traffic. But I think it'd be very important to somehow infuse all of this with that with our local design manual. So thanks very much.
There's good news there.
I'm sorry, who was speaking?
I'm sorry, this is Gina. I just want to say there's some actually some really good news about your county staff and their interest in this study and in including Paula's input on the design manual. So I think there's good things that are going to come out of this.
Great, thank you.
Councilwoman Dingfelder for a question. Councilwoman Dingfelder for a question. So you got to unmute yourself.
There we go.
It's under the, there we go.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, everybody. Gina and Ms. Flores, thank you so much. Gina, I know you've been working on these issues for decades, and we appreciate it. I'm sure Ms. Flores as well. So I don't know who's controlling the the video portion of this, but if we could go back, if it's possible, can we go back to the next thirty map? I don't know who's controlling that. Okay, um, thank you. So the blue, the blue is the are the are the ones we started with, and the green is the next thirty, is that correct? Yeah, okay, so as I look at it, I'm concerned about, well, for obvious parochial reasons, I'm concerned about the cities. The the city of Tampa, we aren't studying, you know, we've only got maybe three or four current or proposed studies within the city of Tampa that I can see on that map. Likewise, Temple Terrace, looks like you've got one or two, and I can't, I don't know if that if those go into Plant City at all. I mean, I guess the good news is within the cities, we're not at the highest levels. Is that is that how these were selected? But my question is, is is at what point will the MPO be using our resources to address the city streets? And I don't want to just say the city of Tampa, but if they have issues in Temple Terrace or Plant City, we should be addressing those as well.
Oh, yeah. And by the way, you know, these are fatal and serious. You have to get up some speed for those kinds of severe crashes to happen. So the city is less likely than, you know, an arterial that's a little further out for those. So that's kind of good news. But your city staff, just for instance, have asked us to fund different studies, and that's what we will continue to do so that we can identify recommendations, just like the county has done, actually, for eight of their high-entry corridors. So that's where we come in to being helpful. And then you guys prioritize the TIP projects that are submitted. So this is where where we can start making a difference.
I guess, and I I don't know where we are in the process, being relatively new to the board, but I guess I'd just like to make sure that, you know, that that the cities are included at the next opportunity in this type of, you know, detailed, comprehensive look by the MPO. I know we can do it ourselves, and I'm sure we are doing it ourselves to a certain extent, but but at the next opportunity, from a funding perspective, and the kind of in-depth look that you guys are looking at, I'd like to see more city streets included. So, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Commissioner Smith, you recognize.
Thank you, and and just quickly, I'm I'm I was so thrilled to see this report, actually, because as as has been the case with Ms. Torres, and I see in Ms. Flores also this clarification that it's important to make our decisions based on data, but it's also important to understand that that data, those numbers reflect people, and the the crashes and deaths are actual people's lives, and you all always make those come alive, and and it's really an important factor of of our policymaking. I'm also excited about this, because it's really seems to to give us a roadmap for actions, not just studies, of course, studies, but it leads to actions. And I'm especially excited to hear that that there's a lot of cooperation and work being done with our county staff on that design manual. I've been bumping up against the same kinds of things Commissioner Kemp spoke about as a citizen activist for years before I before I got here. So that I'm pleased to see that we're really going to be finally looking at that, because it's not just crashes, of course, but it's severe. I mean, it's not just deaths and fatalities, it's the kinds of severe injuries that are also can really impact people's lives forever, as as Commissioner Oberman alluded to. The it was very interesting to see, and I don't know if staff has an extra comment on this, but the slide that showed that eighty-three percent of our crashes are at off-peak times when we have additional, yes, it was one more, there you go, non-peak hours, and and that points to a conclusion that additional capacity does not make our roads safer. Extra lanes do not make our roads safer. I mean, they might help people, they might have other benefits, but they they do not, prima facie, make our streets safer. And the question that I have is somewhere along the line, Ms. Flores said, and this might apply to what Councilwoman Dingfelder was talking about, how these corridors are selected. And and she said, high crash is not necessarily our highest need. So can can Ms. Flores explain that a little bit more?
Sure. But Vision Zero is about reducing fatalities and serious injuries. And I think when we went through this prioritization matrix process is that simply just even looking at the severity crash rates shouldn't be the end-all, right? We have to consider, you know, the how many schools we have around some of these major arterials. We have to consider, you know, the communities of concern. A lot of these major arterials go through very poor neighborhoods where they don't have a car or are reliant on transit or have to walk or ride their bike. So we have to consider, you know, and one of the factors that I had in there was transit routes, because if you have a transit route on some of these quarters, most likely you're going to have significant amount of more pedestrian users within the quarter. But how many of these quarters have you gone to and you see a bus stop, but no crossing for people to get across the street safely to it? So when I think about, you know, when I made that statement, it's the fact that let's look at all of these other community factors that also impact safety and exposure rates. And that's the whole thing, is looking at all of these other things. And then if you prioritize it based on the need, based on those factors, then you can target some of these quarters where, if you're only looking at crash rates, they may have bubbled to the surface, but now you factor all these other things, and now all of a sudden maybe different quarters have bubbled to the surface. So that was the whole process, and that was a learning experience. And I think it's something, you know, it's a lesson that, not just at the county level or the state level, but even the cities can consider that. It's the context in which these quarters really go through and progress through a community that really has to be taken into account.
Thank you so much, and it's another example of of data-based decision-making, but also people-based holistic looking at at so that we can really get to solutions that work, not on in real life, on our streets, not just on paper. And so I'd like to move that we adopt the action plan if if we're there, ready for those motions.
Second. You're making a motion to adopt the, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, folks. You're making a motion to adopt the the Vision Zero Speed Management Action Plan, Commissioner Smith?
Yes, sir.
Second. Okay, we're motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Councilwoman Dingfelder. Seeing no further discussion, please call the row. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Mr. Waddy, you recognize.
Yes, sir. I I'm sorry, I don't know how where the raise your hand thing is. I sent a text.
There's not one, it's not one on, it's not one on here, they don't have that one here, so go ahead.
Yeah, I sent you a chat message, but hard for you to run everything and look.
You know, good and well, an old man like me don't know how to handle a chat message, so raise your hand.
Ain't that much older than me, but I understand.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, the point, going back to the slide and earlier comment by Ms. Williams, the the people not obeying the rules in the enforcement, that slide where it showed sixty percent of the incidents were happening at non-crossing locations on the roadway, and seventy-one percent were due to aggressive driving speeds, people not paying attention, not doing what their, all the signs and all the lights tell you to do. I didn't hear much about the enforcement side of the plan, and that's a major component. And maybe in the future, we can hear more about what we can do for enforcement. I know I use the street crossing signs, you know, the automated light, flashing lights, and I get kind of animated when I hit the light, and the driver will absolutely pay no attention as I step into the street, and I send them some sign language and stuff, and I shouldn't do that. But maybe we can focus on that part of the equation at some time in the future. Thank you.
Are there any other comments before we take the vote? Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Councilwoman Dingfelder, please call the row.
Commissioner Les Miller?
Yes.
Charles Klug?
Yes.
Councilman Centra?
Yes.
Councilman Dingfelder?
Yes.
Commissioner Ken Hagan?
Yes.
Melanie Williams?
Yes.
Pat Camp? Commissioner?
Yes.
Joe Lepano?
Yes.
Mayor Rick Watt or Nate Kilton? Councilman Guido Mescalco?
Yes.
Michael Moreno?
Yes.
Kimberly, Commissioner Kimberly Oberman?
Yes.
Mayor Andrew Ross?
Yes.
Commissioner Mary Ellen Smith?
Yes.
Cindy Stewart or Steve Conan? And Joseph Wagner? Joseph Wagner?
All right, yes.
Okay. All righty, so.
By your vote, the motion is adopted. We now move into the USF Fellowship Agreement renewal.
Hello, my name is Megan. Sorry, my name is Megan Battony, and I. Oh.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. My name is Megan Battony, and I am a member of the MPO staff. So as in, this year, as in others past, the MPO is looking to sponsor a graduate student fellowship from the University of South Florida. This year's selected student is Fatima Elcott. She has a BS in environmental biology and a minor in anthropology from USF. In August, she will begin her studies in the Department of Urban and Regional Planning at USF. In her application, she states how her background in anthropology has given her the skills to conduct the proper research needed to accommodate the different needs prevalent in a community. She will be assisting the MPO with the Tri-County Interactive Trails Map, along with other tasks and as well as developing other skills and working on various projects. MPO's cost for the 2020-2021 Fellow will be thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty. It is not an increase from last year. We ask the board to authorize the executive director to sign the agreement with USF for placement of the student fellow.
Are there any questions? There's a motion by Commissioner Oberman, second by?
Commissioner Kemp.
Commissioner Kemp to approve the USF Fellowship Agreement renewal. Any other questions? Seeing none, please call the row.
Sure, my last name is.
Do you want to spell her last name?
Sure.
The last name of the. Thank you.
Oh, the fellow.
Yeah.
Elcott, E.L.K.O.T.T.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, please call the row.
Commissioner Les Miller?
Yes.
Charles Klug?
Yes.
Councilman Citro?
Yes.
Councilman Dingfelder?
Yes.
Commissioner Hagan?
Yes.
Melanie Williams?
Yes.
Pat Kemp?
Yes.
Joe Lepano?
Yes.
Mayor Rick Lot, Nate Kilton? Councilman Guido Mascalco?
Yes.
Michael Moreno?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Cindy Stewart, Steve Kona? Wagner?
Yes.
Thank you.
By your vote, the motion is adopted. We move now to D, the General Planning Consultant Contracts. Ms. Battony?
Hello, thank you again, Board. So we came here in April to ask you to approve us to go for negotiations with the following nine firms. Next slide, please. So with these nine top-ranked teams, which included both these are the primes, and then there were also subconsultants, we went forward and worked on negotiating rates and working on the contracts. Next slide. The following, the following five firms are the.
Excuse me, Ms. Battony, excuse me, excuse me a minute. Would everyone please put your microphones on mute? Please put your microphones on mute. Okay, continue, ma'am.
Thank you. The following five firms are the ones involved, Atkins, Farr and Peers, HDR, Kittleson, and VHB are the ones that we have completed those contract negotiations with. And so we we have looked at their rates, oh, sorry, next slide, please. So with those firms and with the others, we negotiated the labor rates by classification. So anywhere from a GIS specialist, graphic designer, planner, chief engineers, and we used the data from the FDOT District Seven, and we used their job classes. There are, the FDOT data shows the twenty-fifth percentile, the average, and the seventy-fifth percentile. We asked and worked with our primes and their subs to have their rates be at the upper limit of the seventy-fifth percentile. If they are unable to meet that for whatever reason, they, we request that they must provide justification if the rate was over that limit. So for instance, it could be that they have somebody with a lot of expertise, a specialty that is really valued and will be a great asset to the MPO, and so they have provided that justification. Plus, we look and discuss their multipliers, so their overhead, their cost of capital, and their operating margin. We have also, they have also submitted their paperwork from FDOT that shows where they have been audited and accepted by the FDOT. Next slide. So the contract scope follows the MPO work program, and the consultant tasks are to be negotiated by work order. So some recent examples are Resilient Tampa Bay Transportation and the Plant City Transit Study, with each with its own scope and products. We do ask for lump sum fees that are negotiated by task, so they're based on the estimated hours and the expenses. So the maximum is three hundred thousand per task. Thank you. On the next slide. The contract, so they are signed, once signed, it's two base years with an optional three years, an additional three years. So that hence why we do it every five years. So the last one was done in 2015, and now we're here at 2020. The max fees per consultant is, it can be no more than two million over the life of the contract, and the planning dollars available are six hundred thousand to nine hundred thousand per year. Next slide. So we'd ask that the recommended action is to approve the GPC contracts with the following five firms and the subs, Atkins, Farr and Peers, HDR Engineering, Kittleson and Associates, and VHB. The contracts for the remaining four of the top-ranked teams will be brought forward for your consideration at the first available regular board meeting, that the agreements have been reached. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve? Yes, who's that?
Dingfelder.
Yes, Commissioner, I mean, it's Councilman Dingfelder, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yesterday, I had a with Ms. Alden about this issue. I think it's, the issue is fine, I'm ready to vote on it, but I, but I, my question was especially coming back to the MPO and going to our WMB or DB process for not only consultants, but also, I don't, I guess we also do engineers. And I know Councilman Citro and Mascalco will confirm that in the city of Tampa, we're pushing real hard, especially on our pipes program, which is a billion-dollar, multi-billion-dollar program. We're pushing real hard to get our minority and disadvantaged business numbers up out of the single digits and get them up into approach into the teens. As everybody knows, in the city of Tampa, minorities represent, you know, well, depending on how you how you define minorities, you know, anywhere from fifteen to thirty percent of the population. And so anyway, so we're very motivated in the city to get those numbers up and get those numbers at a minimum up into the teens. So Beth, if you could explain what our process is briefly, I don't want to drag this on, and 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 then I'll have a follow-up, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, so the, our MPO, like all of the MPOs in the state of Florida, participate in the statewide program that promotes disadvantaged enterprises. There is a statewide designation that that firms seek, and we award extra points in our scoring process for selecting consultants through this GPC procurement that you've just been looking at. We monitor our expenditures every year. The last two years, our DBE utilization has been nine percent, eight percent respectively, and be very happy to push that, see if we can, if we can double digits in our next year.
And and Beth, one one follow-up question. I know this is just for consultants, which you told me it's not a huge amount of money. I think you said six hundred thousand total is the budget, but how about our engineering budget? How big is that? Do we have an engineering budget as well?
This is it, that's the, that's the sum total of all the funds that we have available for consult professional consultants of any kind, engineers, planners, public engagement professionals, mapping, the whole nine yards.
Okay, all right. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll support the motion when it, when we get to it, but I appreciate Ms. Alden's comment and effort to really get this number out of the single digits. And I would hope that by this time next year, as a matter of fact, when somebody makes a motion, I'd like, I'd like us to, Beth, if you could present that in, that, I know you do a written report that you sent me yesterday, but if you could present that written report to us at the public meeting every year, I think that would be helpful, and then that way we can all monitor the improvements that we're making in the DBE area. So so I won't make that a motion, but I'll just make it as a friendly suggestion. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Happy, happy to do.
Okay, Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. Ms. Alden, I just had one more question about that. Thanks for bringing that up. Does that also include women?
Yes, the the state designation of disadvantaged business enterprises includes minority-owned businesses.
Okay.
Let me explain to you what minority-owned and disadvantaged businesses live in the state. In the state of Florida, that's women, African-Americans, Hispanics, Native Americans, Asian-Americans, and I think I just missed one, can't think of what it is. That's how the state of Florida classifies minority and disadvantaged businesses. For all of you edification, I've had a conversation with Ms. Beth Alden and Ms., my mind just went blank, the CEO, Mrs. Alden, concerning all these, all of these areas that we're talking about now, including staff, and where we are as far as minorities, including staff. For your edification, Hillsborough County, we are, we are, the minority groups are growing, and that conversation needed to be had with them, and they've, they've guaranteed me that these numbers will change and how they're looking at utilizing minorities, our aspects of the agency. So we've had that conversation, okay? But that's how minorities are broken down within state statute. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second by Commissioner Oberman, seeing no further discussion, please call the row.
Commissioner Les Miller?
Yes.
Charles Klug?
Yes.
Councilman Citro?
Yes.
Councilman Dingfelder?
Yes.
Commissioner Hagan? Yes. Oh, sorry.
Melanie Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Kemp?
Yes.
Joe Lepano?
Yes.
Mayor Lot or Nate Kilton? Councilman Guido Mascalco?
Yes.
Michael Moreno?
Yes.
Commissioner Oberman?
Yes.
Mayor Ross?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Cindy Stewart or Steve Kona? And Joseph Wagner?
Yes.
Thank you.
By your vote, the motion is adopted. We now move into Status Report, Tampa Bay Next Update. Who's bringing that from the FDOT?
Secretary David Gwen, I'll be starting the conversation if that's all right.
Sure, go ahead.
All right, thank you. For today's meeting, we were going to be giving a Tampa Bay Next Status Update, but we're going to do something a little bit different than in our normal presentations where we show each of the projects. Before I get into that, though, I did want to just bring a couple of items up that I thought might be of interest, given the conversations today. We also share the MPO commitment to looking at ways to reduce speeds and to help with our vulnerable road users. In fact, we had several things recently we've been able to do to help move us in that, in that direction. We've doubled the amount of district funds that we are allocating each year to our, to our speed management and complete street projects. That should help us a lot. Our high mobility projects that we have programmed are also going to move us in that direction. But we currently have some really good projects on Hillsborough, on Bush, on MLK, that are going to help us with pedestrian and vulnerable users. We also were just found out that we were able to get an additional four million dollars from our central office to help us to convert at least another eight corridors to all LED street lighting. We found that that's provided significant increase in the, in being able to identify pedestrians and bicyclists on our corridors at night. Many of our crashes for vulnerable users are in limited lighting conditions, and this will help us out greatly. So we're glad to see this all moving forward in the right direction and being a partner in it. Also, I wanted to mention that later this week, we should see the third lane on I-275 through the Staple 60 interchange open in the southbound or towards Pinellas direction. Hoping without too much weather problem over the next two to three weeks, we expect by mid-August to have the third lane open from Pinellas into Hillsborough. So that essentially will increase capacity by fifty percent through that bottleneck location. So that's about two to three months ahead of original schedule. We were able to work closely with our partners and the airport and others on looking at extending lane closure hours and detours to get that done quicker. So I'm glad to say that'll be opened up soon. So next slide, please. So has everybody noticed, because you were a big part of making this happen, last year the governor announced that we were awarded one point four billion dollars to construct the improvement to the West Shore Interchange project, which is, as we know, more than just the interchange of sixty and two seventy-five, but all the legs coming in and out of it that helped connect Pinellas, Pasco, and Hillsborough County, the West Shore Business District, the downtown Tampa, and the Courtney Campbell Causeway as well. One of the biggest challenges we're going to have, because we're only about two years away from advertising this project and three years away from awarding a contractor, is that we have to build this project under live traffic. Some people say it's like changing a tire on a car. If you can stop the car, pull it over to the side, change the tire, it's not that tough. But if you have to change it while the car is running, it becomes extremely tough, and you have to be innovative in finding ways to do that. The Safe Trip that you're going to hear about today is one of the tools that we're going to employ that will help us to be able to manage traffic during this construction. Next slide, please. We are fortunate to have actually created a position within our Tampa Bay Next team that will look specifically at transportation systems, management, and operations, things like this type of work. And Margaret Cabellans, who has over thirty years of experience in transportation planning, traffic operations, and TSM and O, is leading that for us. And so I'm proud to have her here today to talk to you about what we're going to be doing with Safe Trip on the, on the project. Margaret?
Thank you, Secretary Gwen. I really appreciate it, and all the commissioners, I appreciate your attention. We're very excited about the opportunity for leading a comprehensive approach to managing the traffic. And fortunately, we're four years ahead of putting the shovel in the ground specifically for Tampa's West Shore Interchange and the reconstruction. We all know how important it is, and we really are paying attention. Some of you know my, my passion for Vision Zero state or countrywide nationally, and I'm very committed to moving this very important project for the region safely and efficiently managing the traffic. So if we go to the next slide, I think most of you do understand the value of having a Safe Trip and a comprehensive transportation management plan. This is a standard requirement from federal highways to, when you have a program this big, to have a transportation management plan, it needs to be comprehensive. As we initiated this through the leadership of the district office, we identified four categories. We're referring to these as our elements. The first is traffic management. You would think that that is focused on just moving cars, but it is very important on creating situations where people are moving smoothly. If they're moving smoothly through the corridor, then hopefully there'll be fewer crashes. And when there are crashes, because we know they're going to happen, there're going to be fewer fatalities as well as serious injury crashes. So when they happen, we accept that, and our goal is for everyone to walk away or to be able to fully heal without having the long-term detrimental impact to their quality of life for themselves, their families, where they work. Regional demand management is about having transportation choices for everyone universally, look for ways, teleworking, you know, who knew? Within our industry, we have promoted teleworking for decades, and lo and behold, it can work. It's amazing, the the reduction in capacity that we're able to achieve. So when they happen, we accept that, and, um, our goal is for everyone to walk away or to be able to fully heal without having the long-term detrimental impact to their quality of life for themselves, their families, where they work. Regional demand management is about having, uh, transportation choices for everyone, um, universally. Look for ways, uh, teleworking. You know, who knew? Within our industry, we have promoted teleworking for decades, and lo and behold, it can work. It's amazing, the, the reduction in capacity that we're able to achieve, or, um, the demand, just through telecommuting. Innovation is the eye in our trip, and that includes smart work zones, work zone data exchange, and mobility as a service, and then public engagement. Um, public engagement is building on the foundation that was already established from when we were TBX and how we listened to what the communities had to say, and we've redirected where we are. We are here today with Safe Trip as a part of TB Next, and now we want to make sure that we continue to keep open conversation and comprehensive. So people have an opportunity and the, the platform to, um, share an information. So let me talk about each of these in a little bit more, uh, depth. If we go to the next slide. Um, we are starting with a vision. We've, uh, met with several stakeholders, and we've had opportunities and listened, and we have developed this very comprehensive evaluate, um, statement as far as what our vision is, for it to be well-planned and innovative. And we want to make sure that we end up with a safe, reliable, um, system that is providing quality transportation choices for individuals, having strategic innovation practices that has a lot to do with data analytics and real-time dissemination of information and that proactive communication to all the users. Um, this isn't going to happen without having collaboration across the board. So we're looking at ways to leverage not just what DOT brings to the table, but also all that local area network, how the operations, um, we have coordination that's required between the regional traffic management center as well as all the individual traffic management centers at local government. Next, please. So as I mentioned, we have dropped this, and, um, we've identified four elements. Element one being traffic management. Again, safety, safely construct the, the Westshore Interchange. Um, safety and reliability. Safety is about having those, um, crashes minimal in, um, the, any kind of injuries, but also how quickly can we get people out of the way? You know, a crash occurs, move it out of the way and have open roads. Um, and that takes a lot of collaboration, very strong team meeting, or team groups. And reliability, that's about having, yes, you're going to have to go through, let's say you need to get to the airport. And, um, currently, it may take you 30 minutes to get to the airport. While we're under construction, it may take you 40 minutes. But we want to create a situation where it will consistently be 40 minutes, um, versus all of a sudden, it's an hour and 20 minutes. And it would be great if we had alternative routes. Let's say there is a crash that you have, other routes that you would be able to choose. Regional demand management, it is about, um, having different, um, modes available and have quality choices available. We are, we are addressing freight, um, looking at logistics, making sure that we're pushing information out. So our logistics firms knowing that the, uh, we have goods, the movement of goods is very important. Um, deliveries within Westshore, how is that going to be accomplished? Uh, we also want to make sure that we have good bicycle facilities, um, safe alternative routes for people to take that aren't necessarily on the same, um, major roads that we are using today. And then also enhancing transit service. We haven't identified exactly what that means, but we are working with our local and regional transit agencies. Innovation is about having a collaborative, um, open innovation, anything that someone wants to bring to the table. And public engagement, uh, proactively getting the word out, look, putting together those public service announcements, education. We have something that's being introduced within our smart work zones as a zipper merge. That's a really good example. It's considered a late merge. We can provide additional information on that later. That'll be coming up. Uh, next, please. So this is, uh, looking at the traffic management. The highlighted yellow is all the TB Next, well, the majority of TB Next 275 that will be under construction. But you can see already, we are already working with the local governments and looking at how the, the local area network is going to support any changes that we have within the system while we're constructing, um, will be constructing under traffic. So it's imperative that we have the relationships for operations, but also we're helping to look at where can we advance projects in order to enhance the instrumentation, um, throughout all these roadways, whether they're state-owned or even locally owned. Next, please. The regional demand and management, right now, we're focusing strongly on the, um, origin destination. For instance, we already know that there's a strong, a strong relationship between what happens in downtown as well as, um, people moving to the Westshore area or the interaction between those two hubs. What about what's going down in, um, Soho, you know, South Tampa? Are there people there that could possibly be using alternative micro mobility? You had, there was a great study that was done recently, um, for the successes of using the scooters. That might be a viable alternative for people to look at. So we're just looking at how can we have a robust system layered in with the roadway system that we already have and people are using their single occupancy vehicles. Next, please. On the innovation, I mentioned the, uh, smart work zones. So how, I'm just going to give you a very high level on, uh, one of the, uh, the events. We already have a pilot project that we're trying to hone in on to apply to the existing gateway project, which is in Pinellas. But we also have other pilot projects that we want to deploy throughout Hillsborough as well. Um, here's a simple example. One of our goals is to harmonize traffic, um, in order to make it safer for everyone that's going through the work zone. Um, as you look for the, the yellow area, consider that the work zone. On the far left, or in the middle of the, the slide, you would be able to see where we have some, um, green dots. Those are sensors that are detecting the volume of traffic that's, that's passing through the work zone as well as the speed. In this smart work zone, it's all automated. So those speeds that are being detected within the work zone would actually project and automatically change the speed limits as advisory, possibly regulatory, but those would go upstream. So anyone that's, uh, approaching the work zone, all those drivers will be notified in real time the speed of the vehicles ahead of them. We're not telling them the speed that we want them to drive. We are telling them, this is the speed that is ahead of you. So if it's still 60 miles an hour, we're telling them it's still 60 miles an hour. But if it's dropping to 40 or 30, we're telling them it's 30 miles per hour ahead of you, by the way. Don't run in the back of the queue. You know, slow your vehicle down, please, out of safety. We would love to be able to have, um, enforcement layered in there, and we are working very aggressively on making sure that we have all the, um, the policies and the capabilities to make all that happen. So it's very complex. Uh, next slide, please. And then public engagement. As I mentioned before, we are building on the structure that we had established previously. But under Safe Trip, we have identified, um, a community advisory. Oh, let's see. Um, oh, gosh, it's a CAT. I know that. And several of, um, the people within the area are on that. Um, but we do have a very good network in for, in order to push out information, and we're getting ahead of that. You, within Hillsborough, through the MPO, we are presenting to you. We've already presented to the ITS committee, and we have several ones coming up. We are also going to be presenting next week at the Smart Cities Alliance. So we continue to push this message so everyone understands what we're trying to accomplish, because we only have four years to get the word out and people to truly understand what we are trying to accomplish here. Next, please. So the task force, man, that's what it is. The T is for task force. Um, but these are, these are, this is a representation of the, the different organizations that are participating with the task force. But then beyond that, we have smaller groups. So this is the overarching, but then we do have smaller groups that we're going to be meeting with as well, because we want to understand those perspectives. And without having the perspective of all the individual groups, we aren't going to be able to develop a comprehensive plan. We're not saying that we're going to be able to accommodate everyone, but we certainly want to make decisions with that information on the table. We don't want to be blindsided two years from now. Um, and we want to make sure that we're staying on track. Next, please. We also have, um, already met with, um, two organizations. We've met with the I-4 Ultimate Team to get their lessons learned over there in Orlando. And then we've also met with the Missouri DOT, where they rebuilt and they reconstructed this, two segments of I-64. Um, they were able to close down traffic, but we've already heard from them, and we've already made adjustments based on their lessons learned. We have meetings already scheduled with, um, I-66, um, up in, um, Virginia. And, um, we also are working on establishing a lessons learned with the Wisconsin DOT. Next, please. Just so you understand, as far as the schedule, so we are in the development of Safe Trip. That's the place that we are right now. We started in the spring. We've already established a lot of organization to this. Um, we are, we expect in the spring, we'll have our transportation management plan, that initial document that's going to formulate and be our guidepost as we move forward. Um, and then we are already started, even though this says 2022, uh, 2023 of deployment, we've already started. We've already identified opportunities to advance construction on a few elements, and we want to make sure that everyone's, everything stays in schedule. Once we put the shovel in the ground, we are also going to put forth practices where the contractor will engage with us to continuously adjust the management plan based on the conditions that they're experiencing. So this will be a live document, and the contractors will participate. And that is a lesson learned that we got directly from, um, I-4 Ultimate. Next, please. So, um, that's the overview of Safe Trip, and I would love to hear your questions, and we can continue the conversation if we have the time. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Are there any questions?
I have a question, please.
Commissioner Oberman, you recognize?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, thank you, Margaret, for your presentation, and, and I'm glad the secretary mentioned earlier the, the idea of, uh, how we make decisions and where our dollars are spent when it comes to balancing safety and capacity. Um, and with that, that in mind, I appreciate the work that you're doing now. But I'm, I'm still wrestling with our last tip approval and the issue associated with capacity utilizing tolls as a, a means of moving forward. And so, um, while this is a great project, and you don't need approval for particularly the project, but I'd like to ask for a report for the next meeting. Um, in line with balancing safety, Vision Zero efforts, the, the management that you're doing now, as well as projects that we've approved for the tip, um, over the next five years, I'd like to get a report back on any projects on the tip list that are utilizing, um, either a toll process or a, you know, express rate type of process, uh, in its plan. Um, we are going to have a managed lane workshop in October, but I think if we have some perspective on how we balance safety and capacity, um, maybe more towards safety rather than capacity, we may be able to achieve the managed lane goals. And this exercise that you just provided us gives us some good ideas about how we do that in our design. Um, as I mentioned in the tip hearing, you know, if you do insurance, every solution is insurance. If you do transportation design and your focus has been toll roads, that's going to be what you get when you're adding capacity. But that isn't necessarily what we're trying to accomplish here when we balance safety and management of that safety on our, on our major roads. Um, so I'd like to ask FDOT to come back to us at the next meeting to identify any projects that are currently in the queue on the tip, to, um, identify any of those that are possibly going to use a toll feature for managing the speed and the safety and the additional capacity needs on those projects. Because I'd rather know ahead of time, as you're doing with this project, you know, making sure we're looking ahead and making it safe. I think this is an important part of what we are going to be looking at, especially as we approach that managed lane workshop in October.
Yes, I will. Um, yes, we can, um, I've made note of that, and I can give that feedback to, um, the, my partners within DOT. Um, as far as, um, the, the tip goes, I want to express appreciation. We have three projects that we are already started, um, in regard to instrumentation on the corridors, the, um, that are adjacent to 275 in order to manage any kind of, um, crashes that are on the corridors as well as while we're under construction. So, um, that's all about instrumentation, and it's adding, um, the ability for us to help manage traffic and run it more efficiently. And that doesn't mean speed-wise. That doesn't mean you're getting them through faster and risking safe, safety of anyone else that's on the corridor. It's just a matter of using the instrumentation or to manage the corridor more efficiently for everyone. Thank you.
Are there any other, are there any other questions? Are there any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Pardon me?
Dingfelder, and then I'll see Smith.
Okay, Councilman Dingfelder, you recognize?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, and I agree with, um, uh, with Commissioner Oberman, uh, the great concerns about the toll issue and look forward to a lot of robust, uh, discussion on that. But my question, um, Ms. Kubelins, is, um, as related to your traffic management plan, the task force, I saw a lot of, I saw a lot of sort of corporate, uh, government entities there. I don't know if I saw many neighborhood, uh, entities mentioned on your task force. Clearly, as this goes through the city of Tampa, you know, we all can probably identify at least, uh, a dozen or more specific neighborhoods that it's go, you know, that the project goes through or is very near to. And I think it's extremely important, not only that the city of Tampa, uh, traffic folks get out there into the neighborhoods early and often, but also that the DOT does. In terms of the traffic management plans, um, not necessarily will the road be built or, or not, and you know, that, that issue is, is done, but, but in regard to those plans. So what is your plan to reach out to the neighborhoods?
Thank you so much for that question, very specifically. Um, in the, the history that we've had related to, um, multiple conversations, um, we have identified specific champions within specific neighborhoods, and we have found that the, the, the venue or the organization of the meetings is vitally important in order to hear the voices most accurately. And the, the CAT, you are exactly right. It is, um, corporate. It is very strong in the organizations and very formalized in those organizations. And that is the right place for us to have those voices heard. Um, we have focus groups in the neighborhoods. We have champions within those neighborhoods, and we are well-established, have very good relationships at those levels. And we, we have a plan. I don't have it in front of me, um, but we do have a plan, and I apologize, I didn't, um, talk about that more. And so I'm really grateful that you brought that question up, because we do have those networks established, and all of those groups will be let, we will reach out to them in the next six months.
So, Ms. Chairman, just a, a quick follow-up. Maybe, um, uh, maybe you should, you could or should identify, you know, at least one or two people within each one of those organizations, uh, like, let's say Beach Park Neighborhood Association. They're not necessarily right on top of the road, but definitely impacted. But, you know, to, to disseminate that information to their organization. So you don't have to, you know, so, you know, they know who's in their organization. They've got the social media already set up, so when you've got announcements and that sort of thing, you can. already set up, so when you've got announcements and that sort of thing, you can, you know, spread it out effectively. So, thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you, Margaret.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize.
Thank you. So, and I support everything that Commissioner Overman and Congressman Dingfelder were saying about the, you know, bringing back more discussion about tolling and managed lanes, as well as making sure we have public engagement there. And adding to that, I would like to see more discussion about, well, I would like to make sure that there is a public process as we determine how the managed lanes are going to be managed, given the MPO mission of ensuring that disadvantaged communities are not negatively impacted economically or otherwise by highway projects through each community. It's really important for the MPO to make sure that we have a public process of determining how we're going to manage those toll lanes, that it's not just an institutional thing, that we do have a robust public process of that. So when you bring back the tolls, the managed lanes, maybe we can talk about that. And then the only other thing is, if you could go to Slide 6 in your presentation, if it's possible to bring that up for a quick couple of questions. And this kind of raises the point that I know some of us have made before, that we prefer to have these presentations ahead of time so that we can really get into the nuts and bolts before they whiz by. It might make things for a more efficient process, and I'd certainly like to have this report sent afterwards. But looking at this, the yellow bullet, regional demand management, there's a strategy, a goal of providing enhanced transit service during the construction. I think that's a great way to help offset the, you know, the inconvenience and the traffic problems we're going to have. But it's the first I've heard of it, though, so I hope to hear more of that. And I'm skeptical of another comment you made there that, well, I'm skeptical of the advantage we would get from including micro mobility or scooters as a large part of the solution to the traffic impacts of this construction. But I'm optimistic about working with HARD and hopefully get some extra funding from FDOT to bolster the transit, at least during that process. And I was also, my ears pricked up at your mention of the zipper merge. That's the first I've heard FDOT talking about that. I know that other countries really do a lot with that as opposed to the long lanes of stacking, and it's the long lanes of stacking that I've heard from FDOT. This is the first time I've heard zipper merge, which is a really important tool to working through some of the bottlenecks. So I'm not going to get into that today, but I hope that we hear more from FDOT about how that works and how we can implement that here in our community. Thank you.
Well, thank you for all this.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Well, I just, thank you. I just wanted to respond to, I appreciate all those comments, and I know that we will be able to get back to you more about the managed lanes. This is the infancy of this presentation as far as the Smart Trip goals. I mean, as far as Smart Trip, I mean, we just started presenting this last month, or I guess we are already at the end of July, so it would be this month. The micro mobility question, as well as transit, we are paying attention to it, and it's not a matter of being able to have a significant reduction in the percentages. We want to be realistic, recognizing the expectation of individuals, but it is similar to any kind of pedestrian bicycle planning that we do. We aren't looking to make huge changes within the percentages. What we're doing is trying to provide a robust quality network in order for people to have transportation choices for quality of life. I mean, it makes a difference whether you can get on your bicycle and ride two miles to get to downtown in a safe way, or are you completely inhibited from actually making that route because it's so dominated by cars and they're driving really fast. So it's not, we're not necessarily going to achieve any high percentages. It's more about quality of life for the region. There, okay, I'm going to get on, but anyway, I just want to keep that in perspective, and you will hear more about zipper merge. Zipper merge is, it is a proven way to manage, and we will not be able to be successful without a lot of public engagement and education. It's huge on the education piece, and, you know, we're just getting started in that. So we want you to be at the beginning.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner, I have a question.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized for a question.
Thank you. And I don't know if maybe David Gwen, Secretary Gwen, could comment on this, or if it's something, but when I see the scope of this, especially just including scooters and transit and that, one thing I always, that I had understood about Sun Rail was that it was done in Orlando. The rail, the CSX converted rail to commuter system there was done as a mitigation for the ultimate I-4 that they were doing there and parallel to it, as is true here for, you know, going straight from USF to downtown. And I'm just wondering if somehow that that can make its way into the scope of being looked at for this project. It makes sense to me that it would be in the scope of this in some way, but, you know, I know it's not there, but I'd like to see if that could maybe be part of this.
Yeah, actually, it is part of it. We're going to be using MOT funds to fund transit improvements that'll provide an alternate transportation means of the corridor. In this case, we'd have to show that it would improve it through the corridor where we're wanting to keep the traffic down, but most of that will probably be bus type of service as it's scheduled now.
How about in terms of when you're looking at, because part of this I saw on that map was a big yellow line that went from West Shore right up 275 north to USF. So, and I know that that's still on our tip now, to me, unfortunately, but since it is, it is a parallel corridor to half of that corridor that goes north-south. So can that be, that's right, can that be considered now? Because, you know, it just makes sense to me that that would be, that is an upcoming as long as we're looking at it now as being on the tip still for the future. I would hope that it could be something that we could start looking at now. We all know these things go on for years.
Yeah, we could work with HARD on that. I'll be honest, the amount of time it probably will take to get right away, to get federal approval, to get all the funding and interlocal agreements, I'm not sure there would be enough time to get it done by the time that we're going to start this project, which is three years away. But we're certainly going to work with HARD to look for any way we can to partner, and there will be money in our budget for transit to help during the construction of the project. Sun Rail, I think, in that case, they had a whole lot more head start on the I-4 Ultimate, and so, and there also was a pretty big federal champion that made that happen. So, but we'll look at anything, working with HARD on these.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I know we have a big federal champion here with Congresswoman Castor.
Okay. Now that we're moving to that, that is important, Ms. Alden.
Mr. Chairman, just one other question on traffic management.
Dingfelder.
Just one other.
You've already asked two questions. You want to ask another question?
I think I've only asked one question on this thing, but who's keeping track?
Go ahead.
Just very quickly.
I'm keeping track. Go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Secretary, will the DOT consider working with the city to fund more bike lane projects? And we appreciate your prior funding on that, but as this big kind of mess starts, would you consider working with the city to fund more bike lane projects as alternative transportation through those work zone areas and the impacted neighborhoods?
Yeah, in fact, we actually are, and we're working with the city very closely. We just were able to find a couple more million dollars to give them for the green spine, to be able to push that forward. We're also working real closely with them on the trails down in the West Shore area. It'll connect to the Howard Franklin Trail that we're building across the bay. There's a lot, the heights, there's a lot of bike and ped improvements already funded, and we'll continue to do that.
But if we can, if we identify some more, you guys would be amenable to look at it with us?
We always are. We work together to find the funding for it, and we've been successful so far, so we'll continue to do that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Second Director's Report, Ms. Alden.
Thank you, sir. Board members, we are coming into a time of some uncertainty about our meeting logistics. If the governor does not extend the executive order, which allows us to meet virtually, then our next board meeting on September 1st, we will need to have at least a quorum of our board members physically present in a room. I know that there are still concerns about being physically present, and so we'll be working with HDP and county facilities to determine what we can provide in terms of like a hybrid approach. But we would be looking, in that case, to have nine board members who are willing to be physically present, even if the rest are participating virtually. So I will be back in touch with you over the next month as this situation continues to evolve. And on that note, the two items here on the agenda under Executive Director's Report, we had scheduled the annual public hearing of Independent Oversight Committee for the Transportation Sales Certex. We had scheduled that for August 11th. The Oversight Committee would prefer to meet virtually, and so we have postponed that. We have not set a new date. We are waiting to see if the governor will extend the executive order. Our Vision Zero Leadership Summit does not require an action, so we can do that entirely virtually, if you care to do that. If it is reasonable and safe for us to meet in person by the 22nd of September, the city of Tampa has provided the Julian B. Lane Riverfront Center. And again, we could also consider a hybrid approach there, where we have, for example, some policy committee members meeting in person at a distance, but all of our audience members participating virtually. So, you know, again, we'll be continuing to explore what the options are. Please keep your eyes peeled as things continue to evolve. We will continue to post our meeting logistics up on the MPO website at hillsboroughmpo.org. On the homepage, on the calendar, there's links to the meeting logistics, and we will keep that updated on a daily basis. You have in your electronic board folders a copy of the MPO's quarterly report on use of our federal planning grant dollars and a copy of our monthly newsletter. And then I also wanted to know, wanted to let you know that Plan Hillsborough, as an organization, has joined a national group, Transportation for America, which is a group that's very closely aligned with the goals and priorities you've adopted in your It's Time Hillsborough Long Range Transportation Plan. But Transportation for America works at the national level. It connects local organizations like ours, but not only MPOs, regional planning councils, chambers of commerce, local governments all across the country, and involves them with research and analysis, policy and advocacy, and technical assistance. So Transportation for America does provide those resources to all of our board members. They are available to you, as well as to all of our staff members. And so I will be providing your email addresses to Transportation for America, unless you'd like me not to do that, and that's just so that you'll be aware of what those resources are. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. All those, any questions? Commissioner Kemp, you recognize.
Thank you. I just want to thank you. I think it's wonderful that we're a member now of Transportation for America. I look forward to being able to use, as an organization and individually, those resources. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Alden? Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Alden. Is there any old or new business to come before us today? Any old or new business? Seeing none, thank each and every one of you for being here today. We appreciate it. And with that, we adjourn. Have a good day.
Thanks, everyone.